Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo. Today is Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start this evening's meeting with an invocation given by Commissioner Chris Johnson, and then if you could please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner DeBreezy.
By your heads. Father God, I pray your blessing on our meeting and ask for your grace and mercy to be upon our time together tonight. I pray for your continued wisdom for our commission and city leadership and pray for your continuous hedge of protection over our first responders and frontline personnel. I pray for every voice to be heard and understood, and I pray for a meeting that edifies our city, our staff, and our citizens. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the body of which stands one nation under God, in his law, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, a proclamation declaring November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month.
Whereas during National Native American Heritage Month, we celebrate the rich tapestry of indigenous peoples, including the Native American, American Indian, First Nation, Native Alaskan, and other indigenous groups, and honor their sacrifices, which we recognize as inextricably woven into the history of this country. And whereas Native Americans are represented across the United States by 574 federally recognized American Indian and Alaskan Native nations and are descendants of the original indigenous inhabitants of this land. And whereas the city recognizes the deeply rooted history of Native Americans across central Florida, including the Toko Boga people and the first inhabitants of the land that is now the city of Largo, in addition to the neighboring Tumicwak tribe, and lived across the Greater Tampa Bay area, and the Seminole, and the Micasuki tribes, who continue to have the active presence in the community and have significant history across what is now Florida. And whereas the Native Americans have lived through experiences of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that should be shared with future generations. And whereas Native Americans have enriched our heritage and continue to add to all aspects of our society through the generosity and culture and the continued practice of teaching economic, environmental, and culturally sustainability. And whereas our country is blessed by the character and strength exemplified by the Native Americans, who have answered the call of service in our armed forces in greater numbers per capita than any other group in the United States. And whereas during this month of November, we honor Native peoples in this, their ancestral homes, and recognize their continued contributions strengthening in our society. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby claim the month of November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month in the city of Largo.
City Commission, city leadership, and Largo community, happy Native American Heritage Month. This month is an opportunity to highlight the rich history, culture, and contributions of Native Americans, local tribes, and indigenous peoples from across Pinellas County, Florida, and beyond. There are many ways to engage and learn more this month. For example, the Largo Public Library offers an excellent collection of books, digital resources, and stories from Native and indigenous authors. Residents are encouraged to look through the library's displays, website, social media pages, or visit the library and connect with a staff member for a personalized recommendation. We also invite the community to visit nearby sites of cultural and historical significance, such as the Toko Baga Temple Mound and Safety Harbor Museum, the Toko Baga Memorial Plaza at Pinellas County's Tiki Gardens and Indian Shores, and the Ata Thaki Museum in Clueston, Florida, each offering opportunities to reflect, learn, and celebrate indigenous heritage here in Florida. The McGow Nature Park here in Largo also features some local history of the Toko Baga people. As we celebrate Native American Heritage Month, may we continue to learn, listen, and build connections that honor their stories and contributions of Native and indigenous peoples. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have citizens comment. If you'd like to speak about something on the agenda outside of the consent docket, please wait until item comes up. Do we have any cards this evening?
Yes, our first speaker is a group speaker. This will be Adam Sarlo, and he's speaking for April Sarlo.
Do I get four minutes?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Adam Sarlo. I live in the city of Largo. I've lived in the city of Largo for over 20 years. I was proud when you all, when I was nominated and you all voted for me to become a member of the Largo Library Advocacy Board. At our last meeting on October 16th, I was personally insulted and learned, but I was personally insulted by a man that I later learned was Eric Gerard. Allow me to explain. I've never met Eric Gerard before. As we were introduced at the meeting from across the room, he asked what I do for a living. I told him that I work for a local law enforcement agency. He replied, "Yuck." Eric then went on to make disparaging comments about the entire agency. I was shocked and offended. According to the city of Largo, my employer is one of the top three employers here in the city of Largo. Well, Eric, I have here one of the most recent awards that I've received. This is an award that I received after 25 years of service in law enforcement. Eric, your comments were offensive. Mr. Smith, you were not there for those comments. However, the directors of the board, of the directors of the library were Casey McVie and Jerry Remming. I was quite surprised that they did not step up to defend one of their volunteers. I know, Mr. Smith, if you had been there, I do believe that you would have stepped in. And I wish that I could say that Mr. Gerard's insults, to me, was the worst part of my experience, but no, it got worse. In his public comments, he went on to personally call out another member of the board, Aiden Barnes, by name, and anyone that is associated with Aiden Barnes and her ilk. Eric said that he was ready to take them all on. During the statement, during his statements, it's my opinion that Eric alluded to racism and that anyone who would vote in favor or with Aiden Barnes. Eric was allowed to determine the amount of time he was going to talk and what appeared to be, he was in control of the meeting. Allow me to contrast Eric's attacks with the rest of the meeting and the actual board members. The members of the board were able to have a discussion about the statement of concern, and although we disagreed, the members of the board were respectful and kind to one another. Did I do anything about Eric Gerard's insults? Yes, I immediately contacted Commissioner Johnson, who recommended that we have a meeting with the city manager. When I learned Eric Gerard was being nominated to this board, I was shocked. I had to come and tell you guys about this encounter. I later learned about Eric's history with the city of Largo. It's my belief that Eric's behavior is evidence that he should not be considered for this board. There are hundreds of other opportunities to volunteer in this county. Allow him to volunteer somewhere else. Finally, I'll refer you to the city of Largo mission, vision, and values. The city of Largo emphasizes communication and teamwork. In my opinion, Mr. Gerard has shown that he has no interest in genuine communication nor teamwork, and I would ask that you vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Gardner.
In 2019, Largo wanted to become a high-performance criminal organization. The city signed a contract with Matt Whitner and got into the lucrative civil asset forfeiture business. Largo would now start stealing equity witch property using code enforcement tyranny with the help of three corrupt judges. 570 Clearwater Largo Road, also known as DJB Reynolds, was a treasure chest worth $550,000 in code fines. The king ordered the city vultures to swoop in. The trivial code violations dated back five years. When Schofield arrived, he claimed the property owner did nothing to improve the property. Schofield was paid to lie. The trap was set. Even though the property owner, Don Bujon, had fixed everything, the king sought only revenue. Mr. Bujon hired a maverick attorney named Ben Hillard, but even a top-gun lawyer couldn't outplay the king's rigged courts. Schofield kept adding new code violations to make sure Mr. Bujon never achieved compliance. Despite Mr. Bujon's spending an additional $125,000 hours making unfounded property improvements to please the king, the king was not satisfied. The king's court ordered foreclosure. The property was appraised at $900,000, but only netted $99,000 at the auction block. The king was outraged and screamed deficiency. The king ordered Alan Zimmatt to sue the property owner for $450,000 lost revenue, thinking he had a second property in Marco Island, which he didn't. The second attempt at grand larceny on another was a failure. The king decided to steal Mr. Bujon's $50,000 bond money because Judge Amy Williams demanded her palm grease. Two things. Eric Gerard's not the only communist Marxist in this room. All you voted for this, okay, including Robinson, who's in this room. This is what you voted for. And this to make Mondani pleased. The second thing that's really interesting is DJB Reynolds versus the city of Largo crossed its first hurdle, and it's now going to discovery. Of all the cases that were tried to defend against this type of tyranny, they were shot down. We never got to, we never got to discovery. It was just summary judgment. Get the hell out of here. Closed in seven days. And we're really excited to finally see the truth come out in these code-for-profit cases. And Woody Brown, you're, you're, you're part of this. This is what you love, and we don't, and you're going to have to leave someday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Jamison.
What is happening in our country and county is frightening. The military is occupying the streets and invading people's homes without warrants. The federal government is forcing private companies to hand over a percentage of their profits to the government. The government is getting rid of academics and scientists, and people are banning books. These are all hallmarks of a communist country. In a democracy, people are allowed to think without anyone controlling their thoughts or the books that they read. I'm 70 years old. If you would have told me when I was 20 years old that people would be trying to ban books, I can't even imagine what I'm saying because that's how I feel right now. I, I, I don't get it, and it's so upsetting to me. I totally support the appointing of Eric Gerard to the library because we need to keep our country free.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aiden Barnes.
Hello, my name is Aiden Barnes. I've been a homeowner here in Largo for about 20 years and have raised four children in Largo. My oldest attended Largo High, and she's now a sophomore at University of Florida in Gainesville. I was appointed to the library advocacy board by Commissioner DeBreezy, and I appreciate this opportunity to serve our community. We had an awesome first advocacy board meeting when I joined in August. It was very positive, informative, helpful, and we discussed the many services the library provides to the public, from summer programs for kids to classes for adults, as well as the great volunteer work of Friends of Largo Library. I even went on a private tour. So as an advocacy board member, I'm given a list of library book purchases and asked for feedback. I volunteered several hours of my time to look through lists of hundreds of books. I do not enjoy hearing that I was personally attacked in the last board meeting for following through on the process given to me to follow. All of the positivity of that first meeting and the tour changed at this past meeting in October, when Eric Gerard was in attendance. Gerard took control of that meeting, even though he was only there as a private citizen for public comment at the very beginning. He took over the meeting. And I'm very upset that Eric Gerard made attacks on me, and I believe it would be highly inappropriate to appoint him to this board, especially after what I just heard, that he made disparaging comments to my fellow board member, Adam Sarlo, and made negative comments about the police. That is shocking. Eric Gerard's verbal attack on police is extremely offensive. His divisive rhetoric should not be tolerated. This city deserves better. I am just floored. Honestly, we have an option here. Stacy Guyer did step up, and she has put in an application for the library advocacy board. And I'd just like to close by saying some great things about Stacy. She's an involved local community member and small business owner. She served on Better Living for Seniors and for a term as president. Stacy is currently a program manager at Shepherd's Village and is a fellow member of Indian Rocks Church with me, and she's served in leadership for many years. I've known Stacy over five years and can personally attest to her good moral character and positive involvement in the city of Largo. Commissioners, I respectfully ask each of you today to please vote in Stacy Guyer to the library advocacy board. I think she would be a terrific fit for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Guyer.
Hi. I'm going to just pull my glasses out real quick. My name is Stacy Guyer. I am a longtime resident of Largo, and I just wanted to start off by thanking each of you for stepping up to serve as an elected official. As a former candidate, I know how hard it is to do this, and I can just imagine how hard it is on all of you to just try and represent your constituents, so thank you. I'm here tonight to speak out against the appointment of antagonist Eric Gerard to the library advocacy board. We need to have an advocacy board that represents the people of Largo and be able to do that in a respectful manner. I have a whole bunch of statistics, but I, I just wanted to comment, I had no idea what happened with Adam Sarlo, and I knew a little bit about Aiden and the attacks on her, and I just find that very appalling. So I ask that you do consider that as we go forward with this. Our city is conservative-leaning, and I agree that all voices need to be heard and ask the commission to consider this while looking for people for the advocacy board. Only two of the seven positions appointed are held by conservatives, so it is important that we do have a broad representation of our city. While I did apply for the position last minute, I am willing to step up and serve my community as a volunteer. I have served as a volunteer in various capacities since moving to Pinellas County for 18 years. I started serving with Better Living for Seniors with a term as president focused on the Elves for Elders program, which provides Christmas for seniors in need. I served for many years on the executive team at the Indian Rocks Missions Department. This included determining funding for service teams, as well as helping to mobilize them. Along with working with my husband in our business, I recently started working as the program manager for a nonprofit organization that walks along single moms and their kids. I homeschool my daughters for many years, and we spent a lot of time at the Largo Library. It's a very important place to me. We, we went there for studying, researching, and just to pick out books for enjoyment. I actually use the library as a reward for my girls. They love it and still love to go to it now. I'm also able to discuss topics of disagreement in a calm, rational, and respectful manner, which is what is needed on a board like that. We're not all always going to agree on things, and it's important to be able to have conversations in a way that are respectful. I ask that you please reconsider this appointment of Mr. Gerard and whether it truly reflects all the people this library serves. Please consider me as an alternative so that the library advocacy board does not become a source of constant division. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Faustini.
Good evening, all. Matt Faustini, 1015 Lake Palm Drive, Largo. I do want to say I serve as the chair of the planning board and speaking out of my personal capacity. I am deeply worried about the precedent we're looking at setting here tonight. In my entire time watching city commissions since I was 16 in 2007, I have never once seen a nomination pulled from the consent agenda, let alone an appointment of a former elected official to this dais. Is that the can of worms we want to open? You all are elected as nonpartisan officials, and these people are asking you to make partisan decisions. When you serve on a board, you build a connection with the people you serve with. I know I have on the planning board, and I know you guys have. And I know you guys have done that with Commissioner Gerard. You know who he really is, and this wouldn't have ended up on the consent docket if it didn't have unanimous consent. And for people talking about the fact that some event happened, I watched the social media promoting people to come out. Everything was about stopping Marxist-Leninist ideologue Eric Gerard. Nothing about this event was posted on any social media. It was all just about the politics of stopping him. And what's crazier about it is, we have so-called conservatives in here who are in here talking about books and a library appointment, yet they're not here at all to be seen when this commission votes to increase your taxes by 30% since 2019. They're not here when this commission voted to increase your wastewater fees by 51% since 2019. They haven't been here when this commission voted to increase your stormwater rates by 76% since 2019. Where was this so-called conservative crowd? I didn't see you demanding us holding the budget line. I didn't see you out here calling for lower taxes. No one, no one was to be found. Commissioner Gerard has served our city honorably for decades. He has dedicated much of his time and effort to our public library, and he doesn't deserve a political witch hunt driving him out of his continued wish to serve his city. I implore you to do the right thing. Do not set this dangerous precedent for our city. You do. Every nominee from now on will be political game. It will be political fodder, and it will be like this every single time. Please do not take us down this path.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Reese, and I live at 960 Starkey Road, number 7406. I had decided to come and speak, well, to go to speak tonight at this commission meeting. It's kind of ironic based on the other comments I heard. I recently, I moved to Largo a little over a year ago. My mom had lived here for many years, and I had been living overseas. I have been watching what's been going on in the U.S. for a while and was nervous about moving back, not knowing what I was going to find in terms of moving to Florida. But I've been really surprisingly impressed. I'm in the Citizens Academy. I didn't really ever plan to become very involved in politics. It was all kind of a spectator sport. But an issue came up around the condos my mom lives in, and so I had to come to the planning commission for dealing with that. And so I started to learn more about the city. I've been in the Citizens Academy and have been learning about it. Last night, we actually had a very interesting discussion on a couple of controversial issues, and we're talking about how the idea that the city has to listen to all of the different voices and balance them in terms of, do you want road humps or not? Do you want speed tables? Do you want, and this kind of thing? And I realized it was a very controversial decision, what was going on with the planning commission. So one of the things I wanted to say tonight was to compliment the city and compliment all of you for managing to keep politics out of this. So it's kind of distressing when I hear that we're on the verge of, of bringing politics into it because, you know, we all have to live here together, and we all have to respect everybody's voices and try and come up with a way to compromise and work together in terms of what's going on, whether it's road humps and speed tables or what sounds like is about to become possibly an uncomfortable situation at the library advisory board, which when I found out about the library advisory board, I was kind of like, we just had a tour of the library. It's pretty, pretty cool place. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more cards.
That's it? Thank you very much. Next is approval of tonight's agenda.
We pull seven.
Contain a motion?
Oh, second. No, he said pull seven.
Yeah, yeah. I got that. What do you mean? Motion? I'm going to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next is consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 21st, 2025.
Move or approve? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next, we'll have a staff report on the update of Horizon Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Tonight, we have Travis Parker, President of Biltmore Construction, here to give a update on the Horizon City Hall project, and he'll speak about how much longer it's going to take before we can move in. So Travis, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, happy to be here tonight. Hopefully, it's the last time I have to update you on the substantial completion. We had, back on September 16th, when I was here, we had established a substantial completion of October 31st. We did not make that date. We've had some modifications that have occurred. Had a couple snafus with the wells. We've got that corrected. All the wells are completed and in the ground. We've got to just make a small connection between the two return wells so we can fire up the mechanical system. I don't know if you all have been by there. You'll notice that we do have all the paving done, the striping's occurring. It's a lot of finishing, and we're going through this last list of items. We did receive an ASI on October the 13th that was approved by the building department through permitting on the 24th for the building and the 29th for the garage. So we are working through that, pricing those items to make sure we understand what, what remaining items the city wants to add to the project. So recommendations right now, our current schedule update shows November 21st. We're pushing for November 14th. We're working with the building department to establish a protocol for the CO, obtaining the CO, and all the inspections that are required. They are pretty booked over at the building department, so we have to spread out some of those final inspections, but we will be meeting with them shortly to get that finalized. My recommendation is if we're at the 21st, we're pushing for the 14th, and with November and Thanksgiving, which is be to call it November 30th, for substantial and final will be through the end of December. So we can beat that still, but like I say, I'm hoping this is the last time I got a report up here, at least other than at the ribbon cutting, so. Any questions?
Thank you. I think Commissioner Smith's got a question.
Yes, this thing's been a headache for me, and I know many of my residents and probably you and y'all and our staff. I was, at the last meeting, I said October, October 31st is what I was wanting, these damn keys, these keys basically handed over. What assurance can you give me tonight that you will have the substantial completion that you said at the end of November and a completion date by the end of December given to us? I want assurances. I don't want possibilities. I want some kind of assurances right now or something.
I will assure you that we'll be done, final completion by the end of December. We will have substantial completion by the end of We will have substantial completion by the end of November. And, and I don't know what I could offer.
I want blood.
For my soul, my blood can be a pinata for a day, you know, whatever y'all want to do. But we are, we're as anxious to get out of here, too. I mean, we're, we're working right now with basically no, no funds for personnel. So we understand that we got to get out of here, so. But we're not going to leave till it's looking great and beautiful, so.
Big for a pound flash, so just be prepared.
Have you been by to walk it?
I actually, a couple nights, actually, went around and we did a tour.
We need to get you inside.
So.
Schedule me, you've had.
I would like it to be actually inside where I can be working.
Yes, I understand.
My citizens can actually see what they paid for.
Well, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBreezy.
Thank you. Similar to Commissioner Smith, one of the questions I'm unable to avoid is, when is it going to be done? And so when you were here last time, do you remember the question I asked? Probably not. Probably should have just said it. We were talking about the wells, and I redirected back to the wells. And I said, are you saying that the wells are going to be done by October 31st? And I got a, the president, yes. So I want to, I have a statement, but also just back to a question regarding one of your comments. You said modifications. Can you elaborate what caused the modifications?
Well, there's 32 items, and the sum total is somewhere near $400,000. There, everything from added aesthetic ideas. We're not driving the modifications. They're just things that, as the city sees and, and the design team goes through, they want to maybe tweak a little bit here and there, so.
And those aren't modifications due to design issues or errors or anything else like that? Building errors or things that occurred, a punchless item, basically?
No, they're not. We do get, we have reports that we receive monthly that are for punchless items that also are adding other features to the building. So we're working through those. I don't know that they'll all be approved. It's, we can't approve those. It's not anything that we can do. And the wells, we had, we'd had all of them in the ground. The last one, we had an issue. And at 280 feet down, you know, it's difficult to understand what you're going to run into. But that issue was resolved. Issueed an RFI, the engineer answered it, and we were able to make that final well.
Okay, so, and if the city administration wants to respond to whether or not it's their issue or not, let them. But so to, again, to Commissioner's, in my mind, the project's being delivered late. And I know what that means for builders. And I would request city manager to report back what ramifications are going to be done in terms of financial costs that we need to recoup because of the lateness of the literary of the building. We've incurred costs, and my recommendation is that you all have to, you have to reimburse for those costs.
We've made a, we've made an investment so far to this state, so $361,000, so. We'll be working with our subcontractors on that. So we'll, we expect to have a meeting afterwards to go through all the financials on that.
Appreciate you being open to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the spreadsheet completion schedule thing. I like how it kind of outlines stuff that won't take that long, stuff that's not critical, stuff that is critical may take a little bit longer. So it was, it was really beneficial to read through this. I, I have been through it. I think, I don't know if it was since the last time you were here, and really impressed with, with the quality of the work done. I know that, you know, there's some, we're not super happy about the fact it took a little bit longer than it, than it, the plan was. Some of that was out of your hands in hurricane season last year. Some of it, you know, may have been staffing issues following those hurricanes. I'm not really sure. But, but, you know, I, I know that you've been talking to our team about the resolution for that in the end, which you just touched on. So I expect that we'll, we'll come to a good point. And importantly, I think that, you know, in February, I think is where it's bumped to, we'll be cutting a ribbon and we'll probably be in before that. I'm, I for one, I'm excited. I, I've seen the progress from my day job across the street, or pretty darn, not exactly across the street, but pretty close, since, since groundbreaking. So it's been exciting to see it. And, and I appreciate your team's work on this, and I appreciate all the information. We just want to, we want to know what's happening, right? So, so this really helps a lot.
Well, I'm out there about at least every other day, and if not, I'm on the phone with my team every day, so. We're pushing. We don't, we don't want to be out there either. We want you in your digs, so.
The weather's getting nicer to be out there. And again, you're mostly inside now, probably.
Supposed to be down in the 40s next week.
Other questions, content, comments? All right, hopefully, the next time we see you, we have big scissors.
That's right, absolutely. Appreciate it. You know, to cut the ribbon.
To cut the ribbon.
Either way, there will be scissors.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item five, authorization to award RFP number 25-P-843 for emergency feeding for staff to the following vendors: Puff and Stuff LLC, Environmental Earthwise Incorporated, Environmental Remediation and Construction, SLS COLTD, Corwin's Personal Chef and Catering Services LLC, and Cotton Commercial USA Incorporated. Item six, authorization for flock agreement continuance with Panama City Beach as licensed vendor for the flock system with FDLE. Item eight, resolution number 2448, approving the fiscal year 2025-2028 local housing assistance plan revenues, program income for the Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $123,559.12. Item nine, authorization to purchase library materials, including books, nonprint materials, electronic publications, and related ancillary services from Midwest Tape LLC, Bodart Company, Synne Gage Learning Incorporated, Folet Content Solutions LLC, MT Library Services Incorporated, and Ingram Library Services LLC in the estimated amount of $375,000 in accordance with Florida State Contract Number 55000000-23-NY-ACS. Item 10, authorization to purchase a new fire rescue vehicle from Allen J. Fleet Sales in accordance with Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contracts Number 2026-091521-NAF and 032824-NAF in the estimated amount of $57,460. Item 11, authorization to purchase repair services from 10-8 Fire and Safety LLC in the amount of $77,100. Item 12, authorization to purchase warranty services agreement with Motorola Solutions in the approximate amount of $83,200. Item 13, award of scope and fee to George F. Young Incorporated for final design of Lake Allison roadway and drainage improvements, RFQ number 24-Q-798 in the amount of $395,400. Item 14, authorization to purchase annual supply of metal front-loading dumpsters and metal roll-off containers and compacters from Box Gang Manufacturing Alliance in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 010825-BXG and Wastequip Sourcewell Contract Number 010825-WQI in the estimated amount of $570,700. Item 15, authorization to purchase mowing services for ditches, creeks, and drainage conveyances from all-around maintenance and rehab to AAM, utilizing Pinellas County Board and County Commissioners Contract Number 24-0336-ITB-C in the estimated amount of $125,000. Item 16, authorization to purchase one Ford F-150 Responder PPV, two Ford Maverick hybrids, and 18 Ford Interceptor hybrids from Duval Ford in accordance with Bradford County Sheriff Contract BCSO 22-27-1.0 in the estimated amount of $806,025. Item 17, authorization to purchase police vehicle upfitting from Enforcement One Incorporated in the estimated amount of $396,608 in accordance with FSA Hillsborough County Contract Number 25300639. Item 18, authorization to purchase two 2026 Harley-Davidson Road Glides from the American Road Group Orlando Harley-Davidson in the amount of $54,000 in accordance with FSA 25-VEL33.0 contract.
Thank you. Heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packet.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Item number seven, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I wanted to, we had a lot of public comment on item seven, so I wanted to have a chance to talk about it. I've known Eric for two years, a little over two years now. Eric and I probably disagree on almost everything that we talk about as far as national politics go. But, you know, Eric's a close, what I consider a close friend of mine, and we've always been able to have cordial conversations with one another. I know that, you know, there are times that we've disagreed up here, and we've walked out shaking hands and slapping each other on the back and able to be friends. I don't think we ever said harsh words to one another, and I think that helped, you know, make that a possibility. You know, one of the few times I think we did disagree is I, Mr., Commissioner Holmes appointed a former director to the advisory board, and, and, you know, there's some discussion on whether we should allow someone who left the city or was a letgo from the city on an advisory board. And, and I just defended the choice of the commissioner to make whatever appointment they want to make. And I think, because I think it's important to have diversity of thought on our advisory boards. I do believe that. But I also think, you know, what won the day was that, you know, was that board going to be functional with that person on it? And so that, that's my concern today is that, like, you know, we started off kind of on a rough patch on this. And so we're asking, you know, Eric, former vice mayor, long server, servant of our city, somebody who I respect greatly, you know, to be able to serve on this board, where, you know, we kicked over some, you know, and again, I'd like to have Eric come up and talk, if he'd like to, but if that's with the mayor's permission. But I, you know, I certainly, I'm concerned about, like, this board operating as intended with, you know, everyone's voices being heard. And, and so I do have some concerns about that. But again, this is not an Eric that I've been, I've known. He and I have always been able to have discussions about any topic and agree to disagree and shake hands and smile and respect each other. So that's why it's, you know, what I've heard today is, you know, bothers me. You know, we didn't pull this from the consent agenda. We, but I did pull it now because, you know, we've heard from our citizens. And, you know, I just want to hear, I'd like to talk about this some more. So I don't know if anybody else has something to say, but that's what I want to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Loiser.
Yeah, so, so first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. We always say we love it when we get citizen comment. And, and I agree with almost everybody that got up and spoke. I don't want to ban books. I, I think board members should respect each other and communicate freely. And I do think that we should keep partisan politics out of the board. And that being said, given, given some of the testimony or the speakers tonight, I don't know if Commissioner Gerard or former Commissioner Gerard can, can keep those partisan politics out. And I don't know if adding him to that board will make it, will be additive. So I'm struggling. I also, I struggled with this, with this topic quite a bit over the last several days. And because I also do believe that it's, it's the commissioner's decision to fill that, fill that board position. But, I mean, here we are, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes.
So I as well have tossed this around, and I've read all the emails, and I had several text messages regarding this. And I've worked with Eric for many years. And yes, we are definitely on different sides of the fence. But this, to me, I'm not, I don't want, this shouldn't be a political decision. My feelings are towards the board members. And it is a volunteer position. And I feel like I immensely appreciate our volunteers that come out and make the decisions for each board that they're on and, and guide us as well. I don't feel like they should have any kind of controversy there. They shouldn't feel uncomfortable. And, and I know four out of the five emails and three out of the four text messages I got were that people were uncomfortable with the atmosphere of that meeting. Politics aside, personal beliefs aside, but they, I, I just don't, I am putting myself in their position. Position, like I said, it's, it's a volunteer position. It would be so easy for them to just say, okay, you know what? I don't want to be on this board and, and walk away from it. So then we have a, an advocacy board that has no members, and we start all over, where it sounds like some of these people have been working together for several years. We did, in fact, have a position that was filled by, or appointed by somebody, and so that part, that we did, and we did not approve them for the board. So that has happened. It's not a new can of worms. It's not something that we enjoy doing up here, denying somebody who wants to be a volunteer on, on a board. But we have to all respect each other, be kind, work together. I have used the word, no, I'm drawing a blank, compromise through my entire political career. I even have told you all that I had it in my wedding vows because I just believe that, that neither side, neither group of people are right about everything. And the whole, what makes things work is for everybody to meet in the middle and what's best for the citizens. So, you know, I'm really torn because Eric, you know I love you. I grew to love you. We didn't get along very well in the beginning. And, you know, as Commissioner Johnson said, you know, when you have two different outlooks on life. But we were always able to compromise, meet in the middle, and work together for the better of our citizens. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
So, thank you, everybody who came out and spoke. I appreciate that. I'm, I've always said that I want more people to come engage our commission and speak about their views about our city because that's what makes us great, is different viewpoints. I would like to say, this, this is a seat that's been nominated by a commissioner, and it's our job to, to approve or not to approve. I cannot, from this seat, nominate someone else to that seat. So that's not how, I just want to put that out there. It's not how this can work. What I will say at that commission meeting, I am the commission liaison to the library board. Unfortunately, I was 30 minutes late. I hit traffic, so I don't know what happened at the beginning of it. But I will commit to this commission, and, and if I'm ever, and I will talk to Casey about this a little bit more. But also, if I can't make a meeting, I've always tried to have a commissioner fill in to be there for me because I believe in our role as commission. We not only represent this commission on our boards, but also let them know that we care where we stand. And I will commit right now, and I promise, if I can't make it, I'll let y'all know and have someone fill in. But I will not allow that board to turn into something that possibly happened before. Like I said, I was not there. I don't know. I respect Eric Gerard. I've worked with him on many years on things. And Adam, I've gotten to know the last couple of times, a great speaker at our library board, very engaged and is passionate about our library board and a dedicated police officer to our, our community. And I, I respect that definitely because that's a very difficult job. But I will say, as the commission liaison, I will bring this to your attention. If I see any member acting like this to another member, I will not allow this to happen. I don't give a damn about their, I don't care about their political views. To me, the library is for everybody. I'm trying to keep this out of partisan politics. This commission is supposed to be an advocacy. When I talk advocacy, in my view of what I believe an advocacy board is, going out and bringing ideas from other libraries into our library and building the greatest library we have here. We've, we've gotten, and a great staff. Our staff can come to the commission and to the board and offer ideas of what's going on. We've been the library of the year for the state. We just got librarian of the year for our children's department. Our librarians, librarians and their staff are very, very professional, and I respect what they do and what decisions they make. But I will say to the commitment of this board right now, I will 100% bring to your attention if someone, one of our board members act like this, ever. And if it is, we can always go to that commissioner, and I believe, ask that member to resign, to resign. And if it is, we can always go to that commissioner, and I believe, ask that member to resign, to resign. So those are just my two cents, I just wanted to let you know what kind of happened a little bit for the rest of the meeting. We were trying to fumble around, we don't normally get a book challenge on our board. I think I've had, we've had three in the last couple of years. This was not a banned book, it was to be relocated, this book. So there was debate, I want to fill you into the context, it was kind of debated, there was only four members that were there, so it was divided. It was two of the old board members that voted to keep the material where it is, they spoke why. And the two new board members spoke about why they chose that this should be in a different section. So the vote was split, and when a two-two comes down, it goes to the next meeting, and hopefully we can reach out to our board members. And, and, and a couple of them are just at appointments, so they'll be there. But like I say, I will make a commitment right now to this board, if anything like that happens from any of our members going forward, I don't care who it is, I will, I will bring it to your attention, and we need to deal with it right there. I do not want this to become politics, that's one thing I love about this commission. We're not like cities who sit up here and bicker amongst each other. We have a disagreement about some, agree about some stuff, and when we walk out, we respect each other. And that's how it should be in government and meeting people and being representatives to all the people of our city, and that's my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner DeBreezy.
Thank you. To, really quick, to Mr. Faustini's comment about, this is receiving anonymous consent to be on a consent agenda. This is the first time any of us have ever spoken about this before it came, before it became an agenda, so. I, what I first saw, or that Eric Gerard was going to be appointed to, to the advocacy board, and being appointed by Commissioner Holmes, by Vice Mayor Holmes, and, and I truly believe Vice Mayor Holmes has the right to appoint whomever he wants to appoint to the advisory, to the advisory board, as do we. I was able to work with Eric Gerard, he served with me on the planning board. Similar to what Commissioner Johnson said, there was a lot of things that we didn't agree on, but we were always able to work together. When I was contemplating running for this seat, which was his seat, it was Eric Gerard who kind of pushed me over the edge to do it. So my first thought when seeing the name was that, I believe on this library advocacy board, there has to be a wide variety of opinions in order to fully vet the services at the library. A one side of you, I don't believe gets us to where we need to be, in anything for that matter, including up here. But a particular library, considering the, the scrutiny it's been under recently, and having a, a different voice on there was something that I was going to welcome. Particularly because, you know, I, I had gotten to know Eric Gerard, and, and the comments I heard tonight are not the Eric that I know. And, and Commissioner Johnson invited him to, to come up and speak, and I hope you do, Eric, I, I would love to hear from you. You don't have to, and if the mayor allows it. But I, you know, it has given me a little bit of pause, again, it's not the Eric I know. And, you know, I'd like to, to hopefully reconcile that, and as we debate more. But I do, you know, like I said, I thought, when I first saw it, is that, you know, no matter who it is, I do think we need to have a variety of voices, representative voices of the city. I was, I appointed a conservative person on there because I thought there needed to be a, a variety of voices on there. And I agree on the other way as well, that's how we get to solutions, that's how we get to compromise. And I know that we can get there. I think the city may, this is kind of new for the library, this isn't something they've had to experience in the past, and it may need some, some intervention from city administration to help facilitate these conversations, help set some rules of engagement, and, and help the library staff. I know it's, it's probably terribly difficult to have to do something like this, and they're talented, they probably just haven't had to go down this road before. And I know that us as leaders can support them all the way through this. So again, Eric, I, I, I hopefully, in the sense the mayor allows it, but that's the, that's the pause that I have. It's not, it's not the Eric I know, and I, and hopefully we can reconcile that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Holmes.
Well, first off, Eric, I don't love you. Seeing as I'm the guy that kicked the hornet's nest, I guess, let me tell you where this thing came from. I was informed that a person that I had nominated to the board, a person that I had no idea who it was, and I did not nominate them, was having a problem with attendance there. And I was having a conversation with Mr. Gerard, and I said, well, I guess we're going to have to do something about this, because apparently the absentee rate was eighty percent. And why I didn't know who this person was is because this happens on the boards frequently. Somebody will want somebody for a board, and there's nobody available, nobody that, I didn't know anybody who wanted to go on the library board. So the first time I heard about this, I made a couple of phone calls, and I said, hey, you want to go on the library board? No. And it was no, no, and no. And I, well, this has happened before. I mean, there's, there's boards that I've been on that they've been short-staffed since day one. A lot of those boards have disappeared, by the way. So anyway, when I, I had a conversation with Mr. Gerard about a book that we were talking about, and he said he could get me this book, and I said, fine and dandy. I said, by the way, you know, are you interested in going back on the library board? And he said, you know, awesome, boom, he told me about this meeting, I didn't hear all the details about, you know, fisticuffs and all the rest of the stuff that went on. And I said, well, I'm, you know, I'll be happy to do it, because I, I made a quick call to Diane, I said, how many people are on the list to go on the, the library board? None. I said, oh, so he's the first one in line, yeah. And I said, you want the paperwork on? I already got it. Well, okay. I didn't hear another word from anybody until the cat got out, until the word got out, days later, that I said, fine and dandy, put them up for it. I didn't care, one way or another, I had no, no knowledge of the meeting or what went on. I, I, I'm clueless on that, I'll just leave, I'm, I'm not going to say you're, you're, it's not accurate. It's, no, I wasn't there, I have no way of commenting on the thing. But as far as, you know, politically, for example, this is a nonpartisan board, like all of our boards are nonpartisan. So, I mean, politically speaking, we're almost like day and night, I would be day, by the way. Plus, sitting here, I used to sit there until he beat me, and then he sat there. Of course, once upon a time, I ran against Woody too, and he beat me also. But anyway, then I ran again, I said, ah, that damn Gerard, I'm gonna get his wagon. So then I ran against the person who was sitting here, and I got up on the board, and I said, hey, Eric, we're gonna have to work together. Guess what? We did. You name it, we got it done. Matter of fact, there was never blood shut up here. Did I recall you a pejorative by any chance? I don't think I ever did.
Not on the board.
No, not on the board. And now, now, Michael doesn't tell you about it, but every once in a while, I'll sit up here and I'll kick him, you know, just, come on, Michael.
Or hit me with a cane.
Yeah, I've done that. But that's the whole point, it, you know, this isn't a, supposed to be a love fest, it's supposed to be, you know, who's the best one for the job? There, there was a thing came up on, on the, on the community development, and I saw the thing down, and Jamie Robinson's name was on it. And I said, whoa, hell, there's a guy, he's got all the experience on it. Well, I mean, there's no love lost between Jamie and me. I mean, the only thing, you know, he makes me look good, but the, the, the point is, he was the best one for the job. And I said, fine, let, let Jamie do it. And I think when I saw him in, in, in the foyer not long thereafter, he says, well, thanks for nominating me. And I said, just do the damn job, that's all, you don't have to thank me. You know, but as far as Eric is concerned, we, there's never been a, a curse word between us. Even when, when Pat was the mayor, I was on, on the dais, and even, we got along, everybody started getting on the dais, and Pat Gerard is the mayor, and there's gonna be mud wrestling up there, it never happened. It just, we got things done, we worked together, that's the whole idea. And, and one incident, I, I can't comment on that, but as far as history, Eric and I, we got along quite well of sitting up here, and it's just, you name the stuff, we really got it done. I don't remember anything that the two of us really had marked opposition to, I'm sure there was stuff. I, I'd have to go back to my, my records and look, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm a social libertarian, but I'm one of these guys, I, I hire you for a job if you can do it. And, you know, your little ancillary things, I don't, I don't really care about that stuff. But I, I mean, and there was one person who told me, he said, you know, this guy, he did, he did the, what was it called? The, the, no, oh, no clowns or something like that, the, I forgot what it was. And I said, well, yeah, you should do it more often, because Trump's numbers went up four points. So, that's, that's the whole point, you just never know how this stuff's gonna work out. So I, let, do it again, I don't care, you know, if, if, it's, you know, a lot of times, you, you can put bad publicity out there on someone, and it backfires on you. And I said, well, fine, I don't really care. It's just, we, we can, we can shoot, shoot at one another all day long, but you're not going to get anything done. And that's my whole point, you know, he was there, it was good timing, I know the guy. You know, we have a history here, politically, we're, we're polar opposites. But work together, yeah, we can work together, get the thing done. I, I hope it goes through, I hope he can get on the board, and like I said, if Michael wants to sit there and ride shotgun?
I'll try.
I'm all for it. That's an end of my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, thank you, Mr. Sarlo and Ms. Barnes for volunteering on the board. I, I, when, when folks are appointed to board, I always point them out, and, and if they're, if they're here, and thank them. Because, because I know there's a couple other board members in, here as well. It's volunteer, we get paid kind of like volunteers, it's not a whole lot, but we do get paid. And, and so I started out on a volunteer board as well, and certainly appreciate it. You know, as, similar to Commissioner Johnson, my, my take coming into this was, it's not my appointment to make, right? Before I was mayor, the previous mayor, the one before the last mayor, actually changed it, so the mayor appointed all these people, which I thought was crazy, we always had five vacancies on board, not always, but we, we had a lot of vacancies on boards because, because that mayor felt it was their role to appoint everybody. And, and we changed that, so that every commissioner has people that they appoint. I will say that it's a rare occasion that we pull somebody off, the consent docket, because it's not my choice. It's the other commissioner's choice unless there's some glaring thing. And, and I tell you, a political position that's different than mine is not, is not a glaring thing. I think it's an important thing, I mean, it's a problem with some of the government, levels of government that we have now is, is, you know, people think that just because they have a D or an R next to their name, they have to be wrong. And, and we don't really think that way up here, we don't pay attention to those things, because Democrats and Republicans fix potholes the same, you know? And, and so, having said all that, some of the testimony that was said today about behavior at a meeting, it hasn't been my experience. I don't know that it's happened, I don't, really don't know if it happened or not. But we have removed people from boards. We have, as a commission, made a decision to remove somebody because their behavior on the board was not in the best histories of the city. It has happened. So I, I would hope that it won't happen in the future, but it certainly can. And, and that's, that's the way I feel is, like I said, I, I don't counsel any of these commissioners up here on who they can choose to put on a board. And, and frankly, I don't care what their political anything is, I really don't. If they commit to making sound decisions and working with the other people on the board to give us good advice, that's exactly who I want, regardless of how they voted in November, that's the way I am. But, so, so I, I do want to, I did want to say that we have removed people from, from, from boards in the past, and those folks were problematic for the success of the city and the success of the board. And if that happens, we'll remove them, I don't, again, I don't care who they are politically, I really don't. And we, we have so many volunteers in the city that, that are part of boards. I forget the total number, but it's, across all departments, we have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. And, and sometimes the people abuse their position or misbehave, and we have to remove them. And I hope to not, I don't like doing that, but it happens, so that's all I really wanted to say. I, I think, for me, it's, it's up to these commissioners who they have as their representative. And it hasn't always been that way, but I think that's important. Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and I didn't get a chance to say this, I want to thank Aiden for your time serving on the board, and, and I'm sorry that this happened. And, and I, I do want to thank Adam Sarlo, being my second choice for that seat, his beautiful bride was my first choice. But I do appreciate you being there as a family man and someone who loves the Lord and loves your kids and loves our community. I appreciate that you're there. And, and it's not right if we can't talk to each other respectfully, like, that's not acceptable and, and, you know, but we are going to be passionate about our differences. And, and that's something I can say that we, my two years serving on this board, almost three, three now, I think, you know, we've disagreed on a lot of stuff, but we were able to, at the end of the day, shake hands and smile at each other and treat each other with respect. And, and Eric, I, you know, I'd love to hear from you if, if you have a moment to share with, what you'd like to say, if.
If you'd like to, sure, we can offer three minutes, just like other folks, if you'd like to.
I second that one. Not yet.
Well, thank you for this opportunity, I really do.
I got one more question, though. There's, ever since this thing was done, all of a sudden, it was several days later, all of a sudden I had this plethora of phone calls. Oh, by the way, thanks for putting my cell phone number online. A plethora of, of text messages, phone calls and stuff like that about people wanting to go on this board. If you want to get on these boards, tell the clerk ahead of time, because she makes lists of this stuff, because there is a constant turnover, we've got many boards, there's always a turnover on them. Get your name on the list, because that's the first question I asked her, I said, who's in line on the list? One, many. That's what I said, get the name on your list, that's it, thank you.
Sir.
I'm done.
Thank you, and I appreciate the, the appointment, Commissioner Holmes. And thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before I even start, I want to say to Mr. Sarlo that, who I had not met before that meeting, that if I gave any impression at all that I was disparaging to the Largo Police Department, that was a complete error, and I will apologize for my error. I think I was at the very last commission meeting when I got up here and told the board that I feel that the Largo Police Department is the finest department in the state of Florida. And I respect them, and I don't think as an officer in the department who would disagree with that, that, disagree with my feelings. So my apology for not being clear. So my name's Eric Gerard. You're discussing whether I should be appointed to the, to the library advocacy board, and I appreciate the conversation. I will state that my, my views on certain subjects are, are strong. And sometimes I use words that maybe should be stronger than they are. I do not insult other members of the boards that I'm on, and I've served on several boards with many of you folks here, and you know that I do not do that. I state my views clearly, and I stick to the idea, I do not insult people. Ad hominem attacks are absolutely incorrect when on a board, incorrect and improper, and subject for removal, I'll agree with that. I want to give a little, a very quick history of my service in this community. Since my family moved to Largo over forty years ago, I was a very strong supporter of the Central Park Performing Arts Center when it first changed its name and began growing into, into the fine organization that it is today. I was a strong supporter of that, as a matter of fact, you can find my, I think my former company's name inscribed in the concrete outside. I was a member of the Library Foundation Board, the Greater Largo Library Foundation, and served for two years as its president. So I'm very familiar with the library and its operations. I was a member of the Largo Planning Board with Commissioner DeBreezy before he was a commissioner, I think for almost five years, and I served as the vice chair of that board. I served for four years on this commission, four wonderful years, four proud years. I was a liaison to the Recreation Parks and Arts Board, I was liaison to the Planning Board, I was a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for two years. I'm a member still, and was appointed as a commissioner of the Area Agency on Aging for Pasco Pinellas, served as a, as their chair for two years. I was named as a home rule hero by the Florida League of Cities, along with many other members of the board here, for three straight years. I've done numerous trips to Tallahassee, is my three minutes up?
It is, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I, I respect whatever your decision is, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I, I did want to say, because somebody else reminded me, that I was going to say to Ms. Barnes, I, I've been, I don't, I don't think there's any other moms of kids on the board, right? I mean, they have, they have kids, but they're much older, I think, right? Yeah, so, so I'm saying the kids are much older. So, so I've been saying for years and years, like, I want to find a mom that has time to, to be
So, so I've been saying for years and years, like, I want to find a mom that has time to be on that board, that has kids that come to the library. So, so thank you, and I think that's such an important viewpoint. And moms are really busy, so it's hard to get them to volunteer. So, thank you.
Dads are busy too, I just want to say.
That's true. Any other discussion, or questions, or a motion?
I move to approve the appointment of Eric Gerard as a member of the Library Advocacy Board as, for the remainder of a four-year term, which will expire November of 2026.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes four, three. Thank you. Next is item number nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The item before you is a proposed future land use map amendment for the property located at 201 Highland Avenue, being heard on second reading. Since it's been a while since first reading, I just wanted to offer a quick background on it. The subject site occupies approximately 14 acres and is currently developed with the Largo City Hall facilities, the Largo Police Department, and the Emergency Operations Center. The property is currently classified as institutional on the City of Largo Future Land Use Map. To expand the number of uses allowed on the property, staff are seeking to amend the map to reflect a residential office retail classification. This slide shows the existing future land use map with the subject property shown in light blue, representing the institutional classification. And here is the proposed map showing the property in dark purple, indicating the residential office retail classification. On July 1st, 2025, the City of Largo approved the transmittal of the subject amendment to Ford Pinellas for countywide review. The case was then heard by the Ford Pinellas Planners Advisory Committee, the Ford Pinellas Board, and the Countywide Plan, Planning Authority, who unanimously recommended approval of the proposed amendment. Should the City Commission approve this item on second reading, the amendment would be transmitted to the Florida Department of Commerce for a courtesy review. Staff are available for any questions. Thank you.
Ordinance number 2025-04. An ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Classification within described tract of land located at 201 Highland Avenue North from institutional to residential office retail, consistent with the City of Largo Comprehensive Plan, amending the city's future land use map on file in the office of the city clerk pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 163, Part 2, Florida statutes, and the Ford Pinellas Countywide Plan rules providing for servability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We do not.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-04 on second and final reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We do have a question from Commissioner Smith.
Just a comment. I may have missed a slide when I stepped out of the water. There was the one, if I saw it through the email system on this one, is the, the one I liked, where there's no car washes and stuff like that. Is this?
Yes.
Okay, good, 'cause that's one thing I, I was very happy that's on there, 'cause car washes, gas stations, our drive-throughs, and, and car washes and storage units. Hell, heck no. I, no, no, no. So I'm very happy staff carved those out and made sure that they're included in that presentation, so thank you.
So go wash my car.
I'll wash your car, instead of building one.
Thank you, yes. It's only the voter-approved uses through the referendum last year, so retail, residential, that kind of thing.
And that's, 'cause I've been, I'll do a walk-in, and that was something I made a commitment, that I would keep an eye on this for the voters, that, you know, were in opposition of this. And, and those are things that I've heard that people do not want in this area. So I appreciate staff for making those clear items there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you. Next is item number twenty.
Hello again. The item before you is a proposed comprehensive development code amendment seeking to update standards related to the plating process in accordance with recently updated state statutes that require all plat, replat submittals to be reviewed administratively. The amendment also proposes to exempt the City of Largo from the certified survey submittal requirements for city-initiated amendments that would impact multiple properties. And lastly, the ordinance seeks to revise the fence height modification section of the CDC to reflect that all properties citywide are eligible for a modification. There have been no changes since first reading, where the amendment was approved by a vote of six to zero on October 7th, 2025. Staff recommend approval of the ordinance. Are available for any questions. Thank you.
Ordinance number 2026-02. An ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the City of Largo Comprehensive Development Code by amending subsections 3.2.5, 3.4.6, 3.4.7, 3.6.3, 3.7.8, and 4.1.2 to provide for an administrative review and approval for plat and replat submittals and recordings by submitting subsection 3.5.2 to revise eligibility for fence height modifications by creating subsection 3.7.9 to designate the city manager as the administrative authority empowered with the review and approval of plat and replat submittals and recordings by amending subsection 4.5.4 to exempt the City of Largo and other governmental entities from the requirement to submit a certified survey for proposed future land use map amendment applications that encompass multiple properties by amending section 4.9 to update the final plat requirements and administrative review and approval process, providing for servability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We do not.
Any questions?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2026-02 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you. Next is item number twenty-one.
Good evening. This item is for the new fire services agreement between the City of Bel Air, or, I'm sorry, the City of Bel Air Bluffs, City of Largo, the Town of Bel Air, and now Pinellas County. Most of you are familiar with this. This fire services agreement before use simplifies the funding methodology. It's still a population-based funding methodology, but it's something that we don't revisit each year, so it is much easier to administrate for our OPV department. Most importantly, it eliminates the 5% restriction on a cost escalation each year, allowing us to pass through the true cost of service delivery. The service levels and provision of service is unchanged. This new services agreement was approved by the City of Bel Air Bluffs at their regular meeting on October 20th, and the Town of Bel Air at their regular meeting on October 21st, and is on the agenda for the Board of County Commissioners on November 18th. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We do not.
Any questions? Vice Mayor Holmes?
I don't have a question. I have a thank you. Whomever did all the negotiating on this, I'm sure you were involved. I'm sure the city manager was involved, and I'm sure the county was involved, and I'm sure the mayors of the, two of the Burgs were involved. You did a yeoman's job on this thing. This has actually worked out much better than I thought it would. I mean, I, I thought we were more, I was more betting that we're gonna have a divorce than, than, you know, we'll get this thing worked out, but you did a really good job. Everybody who was involved in this thing, I'd take my hat off to you if I had a hat to take off. Thanks.
Well, thank you, and respectfully, Commissioner, I never thought we were gonna get a divorce. I knew we would come to a good, amicable agreement here. And my thanks go out to the Town of Bel Air, and the City of Bel Air Bluffs, and the county for all of their collaborative work on this. I appreciate everybody's effort. And I appreciate the patience of the board.
That must have been like herding cats.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve the 2025 Fire Protection Service Agreement between the City of Largo, Town of Bel Air, City of, City of Bel Air Bluffs, and Pinellas County for the provision, provisions of the fire protection service in the Town of Bel Air, City of Bel Air Bluffs, and the Bel Air Bluffs Fire District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you, Chiefs. Thanks for all your work on this. And thank you to Bel Air, Bel Air Bluffs, and County EMS as well.
And city manager.
I know. Next up is item number twenty-two.
Yes, this item is the amendment to the fire station interlocal agreement between the City of Bel Air Bluffs and the City of Largo. The original fire services, or, I'm sorry, the original fire station agreement terminates upon the termination of the original fire services agreement. So by replacing the fire service agreement, we are terminating the station agreement, and this amendment just ensures the continuation of the fire station agreement through the term of the new fire services agreement. That was a lot.
Do we have any cards on this?
We do not.
Any questions?
I'll do it. I can find it. I move to approve the First Amendment to interlocal fire station agreement between the City of Largo and the City of Bel Air Bluffs to provide for term of use and disposition of Fire Station 43.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I just want to say thanks to all our people who serve on our advisory boards. It's a thankless job, and, and we, it's really appreciated to hear, you know, what they have to say about the subjects. It's important that we get that feedback from our citizens, and it's the best, I think it's one of the most effective ways we can get that feedback. So I greatly appreciate all our volunteers, and look forward to a great, great month.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Going back, I thank all the citizens who came out and spoke tonight. Things are passionate, and I, and I respect that, and I thank them for coming out and speaking tonight, and, and doing that. That's one great thing about America, is you could, you know, voice your views to your government and your elected officials. So I thank them all. One cool thing that I'd like to tell the public is gonna come up on Saturday. We're getting back into the movies in the parks, so it's supposed to be getting cooler. So bring your family out to Central Park this Friday, November 7th. They're gonna be showing the movie How to Train Your Dragon, live action. So, kind of cool, nice little, nice weather.
Eighty-five degrees.
Huh?
Eighty-five degrees.
Is that what it's supposed to be? I don't know. Eighty-five. But, no, it's, they're fun little things to do with family, and I love that Largo provides so many things. And when I walk homes and hear people talk, you know, and they're asking about, you know, what they love about Largo, it's, you know, the recreations and the little things that we provide our community. So sometimes, you know, they need to know that, we need to know that they enjoy everything we have in, in our parks. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, it's at 6:30. 6:30.
6:30, or around. It's one that, one that gets dark.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Holmes?
I've said enough.
Thank you. Here, thank you. Commissioner DeBreezy?
I love that. Thank you.
I thought you could say ditto.
Yeah. Thank you to everybody up here for the lively debate, and to everybody who came out and spoke tonight. You know, this is one of those nights where you learn that, you know, whatever decision you make is gonna upset half the people and make other half happy. But I know everybody here did what they felt, what they thought was right. And, you know, I made two comments during that. One of them was, I really do believe that open dialogue of diverse opinions is what makes us successful, including our advisory boards. I appreciate Commissioner Smith saying he will make sure that that is a well-run meeting. And to the city staff, like I said, I think that, you know, the, the library staff are confronting issues they may not have had to confront in a while, and I know you will offer any assistance to help make those productive meetings. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lauser?
Yeah, so, so I just want to say thank you to everybody also. I appreciate the civil discourse. I love, I love the debate, even when it is somewhat spirited. Also wanted to say, my wife and I went to the Central Park Performing Arts Center and caught the Haunted Illusion show. So if you haven't been in there yet, the renovation is awesome. There's not a bad seat in the house. It was a great time.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody that came out tonight and gave us input. Certainly like to see that, and they got, they got an update on the Horizon Building, too, so that's kind of cool. And I also want to make sure that everybody knows that Veterans Day is next Tuesday. We will have a Veterans Day ceremony, ceremony at Largo Central Park at 9:30 in the morning, so come on out to that. It should be cooler than 85.
It will be.
It will be. And then, if you're solid, if everybody wants to know this, if you're solid waste, residential solid waste is on Tuesday, it's gonna be bumped to Wednesday, so don't take it out until Tuesday evening. And that's all I had on my list. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to remind the community that the Vision 2030 Strategic Plan is on the web. Please, we welcome your comments, so everyone, please take a look at that and get back to us. Also wanted to let the community know, you may have seen a big event last week. We had a, an active shooter alarm at Largo High School. Thankfully, it was a false alarm. But those types of events involve multi-jurisdictional response, dozens of fire vehicles and police vehicles from all over the county, you know, show up when those alarms go off. So we'll continue to work with the school district, and hopefully minimize the number of false alarms that we have, 'cause we have done two or three of those this school year, so. But want the community to know that our response was exactly as we expected it to be. Everyone did a great job, and the inter-district coordination was, was incredible, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any action items?
I heard none.
Very good. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.